Duncanville, the community we call home. We ask for that our decisions be guided in the spirit of improving our economy and community. We ask for the protection of the city's employees and all of their families and students and business owners who reside here. We ask this prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
And then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the US flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas pledge?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
First item on today's agenda is the Citizens Public Forum. To submit a comment via email if your comments to be read, following information is required. Submit a comment by 4:00 PM on Monday, March 25th, 2024. Email to symphony.williams@duncanvilletexas.gov. The email title being Public Comment, March 25th, 2024, and your personal last name. Do we have any public comments? Item number two on the agenda is the Director's Reports.
If I'll just share with you real quick, so we have been advertising for a new Economic Development Director. Good news is we've received some really strong applications and candidates for the position. We're currently in the process of reviewing some of those applications and kind of seeing collectively who our top half dozen are, if there's alignment. And then from there, I'll let you finish. And then from there, what we'll do is we'll set up interviews. One of the things that, and I don't know if you've done this before or not, but one of the things I wanted to invite is is any of you as members of the board, if you'd like to join us in those interviews. We'll make sure that you have the times when those are all set up. We welcome your involvement.
Any questions on the attached reports? Do we need to make a motion to accept those? Item number three on the agenda, Briefings and Presentations. First item is Day Drink Wine and Cocktail Lounge Sponsorship Application Presentation of Lolesha Day.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lolesha Day. I own Day Drink Wine and Cocktail Lounge. No, I did not bring samples.
Palmer, why not?
Today I am going to give you a quick presentation. So basically, I just want to tell you guys a little bit about what we do, who we are. So Day Drink Wine and Cocktail Lounge, we came to Duncanville last, 2022. We've been there a little bit over a year. We have food, we have beverage, of course, and we have entertainment. We also have art. That's just a look on the inside. You can see we have art on the walls from Mr. Curtis Ferguson, who's an educator here in Duncanville and also won some awards from the city. So one of the things that we are really proud of is that we are really cultured in the arts. We're trying to really foster the arts. So we have lots of performing artists coming in and there's... So we're trying to create a welcoming space accessible to everyone. We want everyone to feel comfortable in there. We want people to come and enjoy the visual and the performing artists. And we want to have a lot of socialization across the board. We want that diversity in there. When we walk in, we want to see a representation of Duncanville. So we've had a lot of great musicians coming in, some that are very world renowned. Eric Willis, for example, Curry Percale, they're really well known. Jonathan Fisher from East Dallas, and he travels the world. Nandi, who's also well known. All of these artists have been at Day Drink Lounge. I know you... And we've had such a positive response. The thing that I want you guys to know is that, we probably know this, but every single artist requires a fee. And as a new business, we've been, we've been taking care of that. We've been taking care of all of our artists and all the, all the things that come with it. And we offer these, these performances free of charge. There's no charge to come into Day Drink, never has been. I'm trying to keep it that way. I really want people to come in and to enjoy what we have to offer. So we actually decided to do a Jazz Night series. We've already gone through half of it already, and we've had a really good feedback about it. Really, people just really enjoy it, coming in and hearing some great artists. Our next artist is actually Audra Scott. I don't know if you guys know her, but she is very famous. She works with the artists out of Brooklyn, Washington, and Dallas, and she's been doing a lot of work in her, in her field. She's pretty well known. And we have some other artists, and we actually have an open jazz because people have been asking to come in and just, they just want to play, you know? And so we found a niche that a lot of artists, there's singles, duos, or trios, don't have a place to play. The big bands, they can go to like other places in Dallas and play, but they don't want to hire just singles and doubles. So we want to create that space here in Duncanville. We want to be known as that jazzy spot in Duncanville. One of the things we also found out is that all the people at the hotels right across the way there, they want to come too, but they don't know. They don't have transportation. They don't feel comfortable walking. They don't know where they're going. So we want to actually go ahead and rent that spa, rent that bus and go get them. We talked to the hotel already, and they said, hey, yes, just let us know when, let us know where. So that's kind of what we're asking for the money for, to rent the space, to bring in the additional artists, and to take care of the expense that that, that comes with that. Again, all of these performances are free. They're open to the public. You don't have to buy anything to come in. You don't have to do anything but come in and sit and enjoy the art and enjoy the vibe. And that's what we're asking for. So that's it. Any questions for me? Yes?
You mentioned a hotel. Which hotel?
The ones right across the street from us, the Hilton Garden Inn and the Hampton.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. However, if, if, if we can, we'll probably go to all the ones in Duncanville. I know we have five. But we've already talked, only talked to those two right now. We want to kind of test it out first to make sure that it's something that's going to work out and everybody's going to be happy with the results. All right, any other questions for me?
I can tell you that I may or may not have had a glass of wine with Lolesha there at Day Drink Lounge, and a number of folks, guests come in from hotels, they really do. Because especially if you're like at a hotel, right? And you're trying to figure out like, where can I go? Where can I just go relax at the end of the night?
Where is Day Drink Lounge?
Good question. So if you are standing in our door and looking out the front door, you'll see the Krogers right across the street. So we're on Camp Wisdom in the Knick Knack Shopping Center. And we're actually trying to dub that as the Entertainment Square because we also have some other restaurants over there. And we also partner with lots of businesses. We brought in the Intuit Company from North Dallas. They had a tour and they came to Day Drink Lounge, and we had a nice little event there. They've come twice now. So we've been partnering with a lot of businesses, trying to bring people in and letting them know we're here. Yeah, so. And we also have a lot of people, we have about, I'd say about five regulars who whenever they're in town, they go to the hotel over there, they come to Day Drink because they know. But it's the rest of the people who don't know yet, and we'd like to offer that shuttle service, so.
Where are you going to put the stage?
There is no stage. So Day Drink is a very small intimate spot. It's just a little area, right? Just like when you walk in, it's just a small area. It's just big enough for, we've had it up to four musicians at one time.
Where are you going to put them? In your, outside of the stage?
Just when you walk into the right. I think...
Not an outside stage or anything?
Not yet. We're planning on something else. That's a whole nother conversation. But we are planning on something for the whole square. But no, when you walk in to your right, there's microphones, camera, there's all the hookups, there's the speaker. Most people bring their own equipment though. Everybody that we have that come in, they're professionals and they bring their own equipment most of the time. Any other questions?
Any other questions for the board? Thank you. Next on the agenda is item 3B, a presentation from the National Black Trans Advocacy Coalition Sponsorship Application Presentation. Angela Owens, City Events.
So for those of you guys who don't know me, my name's Angela Owens. I am the City Event Planner. I'm also the hidden member of EDC. Technically, I work with you guys, but I'm housed in Parks and Rec. So one of my jobs is to help people when they do hot tax, hot tax applications, develop them. What are they allowed to use them for? When does something qualify? When does something not? And hopefully that the mother funding even doesn't qualify. As you know, we've had a lot of changes recently, and one of the things is we're moving the hot tax approval process under Economic Development, Development Law. So we're bringing the Black Trans Advocacy Group. If you're not aware of this group, this is a national organization. It's a 501(c). There's a lot of information I have, but the paper I gave you is kind of a summary of all of it. This thing hates me. It always hates me. I think it's never worked yet. It doesn't, every time. Oh, there we go. So 2024 is their conference, and they're hosting it in Duncanville at the Hilton. Kind of give you some ideas. I got official numbers at like 4:20 today. They have reserved 723 rooms at the Hilton. They have reserved 120 plus at the Hampton. Every ballroom, meeting room Hilton has is booked by then. Carrie over there says she expects the ballrooms and the meeting rooms alone is $60,000 a profit for four days. I just take them down.
It's not.
So cost of attendance for this event is between 150 and 1500, depending on the package you choose. I gave you a couple of the packages behind. They've almost got 15 different packages a person can choose from. Everything from being a parent to being a child, businesses, professional development. Some of the ones that were really interested in me were the Empowerment Conference, where they get a general workshop, the keynote speaker luncheon, summits, gala. It's $250. That does not include their hotel room. But if you'll notice, down the Couples Conference and the Team Conference, those are sold out. Completely sold out. They cannot move anymore in there. They've tried. The ones that included the hotel, she said sold out within a week. She said one of the things that they're going to change for next year is they're going to start including that more. They're going to start offering more of them. So what they want to do, and this is a complaint I hear from all of our hotels. There is no transportation for conferences between the airports and the hotels. So they miss out on a lot of conferences, conventions, because it's such a hassle when you're, you've got 700 people coming and they each have to take an Uber. So what they didn't know, and I've learned in studying this hot tax, is transportation is one of those things that is covered as long as it begins or ends at the hotel. Doesn't matter where else it goes, as long as it starts or ends at the hotel. So what we want to do is we want to start a shuttle system for the two days that they're loading in and out, the 700, 800 people that are coming into town. We want for five hours, they're going to run a shuttle back and forth from the hotel to the airport and from the airport back. This will allow transportation of luggage, it'll transfer the people, obviously. I helped find their bids, and it was the most, we asked for 15,000 because you have like little things that pop up, and I can, if you ever want to see what happens when you're event planning, I will show you what my budget always starts out with and then what it looks like. So I always give myself about a 30% cushion, which is what I did there. About, average is anywhere between 12,000 and 13,000 for both days. So I am open to questions.
So, any board members, any questions? So what is, I didn't catch it, or maybe I just, maybe I just missed it. What is the ask for the board?
Approval, for, to be able to use the hot tax for this. Yes.
For 12,000, right?
For 15, is what I believe is on the app. Okay, I like 12,000. I have a lot of, I have five apps in them, so. And they all have very small, but five digits, so I get them mixed up.
This may be hyper technical, but just confirming that, because we're using Hilton Garden Inn and then we're using Hilton. Are we using that interchangeably?
Yes.
So all are the Hilton Garden Inn in Duncanville and then you mentioned the Hampton?
All of this will go with their partnering with the Hilton, but the Hilton ran out of rooms. So they had made an agreement, they have an agreement with Hampton is that if they ever run out of rooms during a conference, whether it's this conference or the referee conference that comes every year, the coaches conference, they will roll into that them before they go to any other hotel.
I'm just confirming because...
Yes, they're all...
Hampton is a Hilton brand, so that makes sense. I'm just confirming, we're talking about the Hilton properties in Duncanville solely.
Solely.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Do you happen to know how many years this has been here?
This is actually their first year, but they have had such a great experience. They already know they're coming back. She's already said between what's happened with the city, because when Kim got, Carrie got the call that they wanted to do it, she called me and said, hey, they're going to need help with transportation. Can you help them out? And I said, yeah. So I met with them like two or three times to really work on their application and explain, this is what you're allowed to do, this is what, what you're not allowed to do. Because they wanted to ask for like marketing, I was like, well, it's a little late to ask for marketing money. That's a pre, so in June, you'll see me again. Because I told them, I was like, no, no, we have to do that early because you have to have an entire marketing plan. But I said the transportation absolutely meets the goals, meets all the letters of the rules.
How many years has this been going on?
This is their 11th conference. 11 years I've been going.
And then I was a little confused when I looked at this. It's, some of the bids averaged out at $2,000 a day, but how did you come up with the 12,000?
Because first of all, it's 12,000 an hour. I mean, it's 2,000 an hour. And there's two of them that are running. So like one may be at the hotel, the other one will be at the Hilton, and they'll be exchanging so that there's a constant flow. Nobody's standing at the airport for, on a good day, an hour between traffic.
Are they going to shuttle to like the south remote parking lot where they could be picked up like they do for the Trinity Railway Express?
No, they'll be picked up at the actual airport.
How are they going to know to get them from the airport? It's very confusing up there.
Oh, no, no, I get that. That's the communication part that... Sorry, I've tried, I have to keep saying not their names. The company, the advocacy, will be having with their constituents. They, members that are having, don't know about this because they didn't want to promise something and not be able to deliver.
And so they have their flight schedules and kind of...
That's part of it is that you have to turn in your flight schedule. Like you have to tell us when you're coming, how many will be in your party, who you're flying in with, when you're flying out. All of that will have, they have to gather that to be able to get on the shuttle because there will be a list of approved people to get on the shuttle for a couple of reasons. Safety is number one, though. We don't want people randomly getting on our bus and ending up in Duncanville when they need to be in Dallas.
I guess that's my question because I'm up there so much. I know that the remote south parking lot is where they shuttle folks to go to the Trinity Railway Express. And then the Trinity picks them up there, so they alleviate driving all throughout the whole airport and getting lost and taking the wrong ramps and get all that.
When you're referencing driving, are you talking about the bus drivers or you're talking about? Okay.
The Trinity has a bus system. They shuttle back and forth. They take them over to the Irving, well, it's the, the Fort Worth Trinity Rail Station, which is near Trinity Boulevard and 360. So they're not driving through the airport. They're going specifically to that stop. They pick up whoever's there, and then they go to the other train station. They just do a loop there.
I believe that's an agreement between them and T R E. We don't have that agreement.
No, I understand. But I'm saying, why can't these folks go to that spot?
Because some of them will get on the wrong shuttle and end up at the train station. I try, if you've ever been at a conference where there's multiple conferences going on at once, everybody starts looking the same after a while. And while we have every intention of having big banners across the bus so that they don't get lost, we're hoping that if we have them, we're going to meet them at the front door. Just like if your significant other was dropping you off at the hotel, I mean, at the airport, they would do it at the front door. The intent is that they will as well.
I can make a comment. Unrelated to why I'm here, I own a transportation company for buses and everything. So we, this is all we do, is transportation like that. We tell everybody to go to a central terminal, like Terminal C, lower level, and then the bus just pulls up there. And then we'll go there and then drop them off, come back to Terminal C, lower level. And we just put a sign on the bus so everybody knows. And the bus driver can check the list. And to save some money, I'd love to provide a bid. I don't know if you run my company or not, but afterwards we can discuss it. Talk to me.
Thank you, and I are on the same page. I just see, my personal opinion, I just see trying to get, navigate the airport. It's very confusing, all the off-ramps and trying to get the buses through there. Just see that there could be a disaster of the number of shuttles being there and people waiting for long periods of time for them to make sure. What happens if they miss that Terminal E pickup and then that person has to wait a whole hour or something?
Well, that's why we're running too, is that hopefully the hour, the longest they would have to wait is an hour, and that's at 5 o'clock traffic. But the intent is that they'll be done picking everybody up by 4 o'clock. Because I said you do not want to be in a bus on Dallas, coming here from Dallas. Just trust me on that one. I get stuck on 80 and 20 all the time.
So the, on the sheet here where you get the bids, the, the dollar amount is per hour and not per day?
Correct.
Any other questions? Just if I could have a real quick conversation with you. So Angela mentioned this at the beginning. So hot tax previously was just an internal approval, more or less.
It flexed, yeah.
So one of the reasons this is before you is Angela and I had a conversation, and I'm still digging into this, but the only vague reference I can find to who has the authority to approve hot tax money is there was a resolution passed by City Council in 1974. And I can't find any clear policy about whether or not the city manager is authorized or Economic Development Director, blah, 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 other than this resolution from 1974. So it's definitely something that needs to get cleaned up. But in the meantime, since it's more closely related to everything that you guys do, figured we'd bring it to you. Any other questions? Thank you. We'll now consider the approval of D C D C minutes for the regular meeting held on February 26, 2024. Here's an interview, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. That we approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on February 26.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any votes? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we will consider the approval of D C D C minutes for the special meeting held on February 29, 2024. entertain a motion for approval or amendment.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On second, page two, item five, the, the way that paragraph is worded, I don't know if it's proper. So what occurred that night, I believe we approved?
There was an approval of property sale, but that's not reflected in item five.
I'm sorry, you're item five of the February 26?
Yeah, the day, the day time. Yeah. It was the special meeting that we had.
Which one, 9th, not the 26th?
What's the, what's, what are you, you saying that this... That we went into executive session, we discussed the property.
Right.
And then we agreed to move it to council.
Right.
But the way it's worded is that review of Exhibit A is part of the ongoing, going to council for approval.
Oh, I see. So our, you're saying our approval is not reflected in the minutes?
Correct. That it's not the approval of the property purchase going to the council. It appears that it's the approval of Exhibit A, which was the question I brought up about the survey being acceptable because we're not survey experts, and just make sure that was covered in there, so.
I believe technically your vote was on authorization of the earnest money contract, which effectuates the sale essentially. Yes, that's, should be reflected in here, correct. So can y'all bring this back for our next meeting?
Absolutely.
For us to... I'll take a motion to table item five until the next meeting.
I make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by, signify by saying aye. Any votes? Motion carries unanimously. I'll take a moment of personal privilege real quick. I have got to run to a work engagement that I could not get out of. I'm going to pass the gavel to Board Member Goff. I should be back here shortly, but unfortunately I could not get out of this. And so hopefully I'll be back in the next maybe 45 minutes to an hour. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is Agenda Item Number Six. Receive and discuss the following reports. A, D C E D C monthly budget report from February 2024. E, city sales and use tax comparison summary for February 2024. Duncanville Field House Sports Facility Financial Status Report for February 2024. Main Station Duncanville LTD's monthly financials for February 2024. Schedule I for Main Station Duncanville LTD. And four, F, M R B Group Economic Development Updates.
So just quickly here, so the monthly budget report that is attached, but I guess to a couple of things just to highlight here real quick. So sales tax collection was up slightly for the past month, 2.87%. See that? I think one of the things, a couple of different things to note, excuse me, is a... As, uh, January thirty-first, the economic developments unaudited fund balance is six point eight million dollars. So you have six point eight million dollars available to use, um, with an unaudited, uh, fund balance. With an actual year-to-date unaudited fund balance is six point nine million dollars. One of the things that I'll share with you, a change that we're making, uh, internally in terms of operations. When you approve a grant request, we are now taking that, we've just started this, so I don't even have good numbers yet to share with you. But we're actually taking that grant application once that's approved. And we're putting that against your funds as what's called a requisition, which then generates a purchase order. So that basically we're encumbering those funds for that grant application, that has not been done previously. And so I don't have a clear number to give you of exactly what's available to spend that hasn't already been committed. So we're just beginning that process, um, and then we'll have, we'll be able to have, you know, a lot cleaner month-to-month number to be able to share with you. The field house is the, the very next page there, uh, you're showing a negative fund balance there because of the ongoing debt associated with the field house. I believe the, I believe the, uh, the amortization, the way that works out is that should be paid off in twenty twenty-five. Um, however, that I will share with you does not necessarily reflect the operations of the field house. Uh, which the number there actually is a positive number overall. So with that said, without going into, and then we have the main station reports and then, uh, everything there for you. Happy to answer any questions on those and then I'll let M R B do their own update for them. Any questions on any other financial?
Not necessarily with, first of all, any other board members, any questions? So, so Jerry, I was thinking about our last meeting, you just at a very high level talked about maybe some of the very negatives. That need further exploration.
Yes.
Maybe in progress towards at least just kind of getting those things lined up, just anticipation. Some of the liability concerns, you want to make sure we mind the law, if you are.
Yes, um, and actually there is a item on your executive session agenda this evening for real property. And I'd like to have a conversation with you in more detail about that.
I guess then the last thing just with respect to, uh, well, it's just unrelated to main station, it does the same. As long as we have any updates on the leasing activity, uh, for.
Yeah, you know, um, I've actually been, uh, up to Wheatland Plaza, I think it was just last Thursday, I believe. And I went through and toured the entire plaza with the developer. Um, I know that, uh, there's been a request when the city council meets jointly with the economic development board. For a full update on Wheatland Plaza. One of the, the things that we've had some internal conversations about is waiting until the report is available. The M R B report so that we can have a joint meeting of the city council and the D C D C board and do that in more detail. What I would share with you though is, other than one, I believe, larger space where there's trying to attract, um, like a restaurant. Or slash some sort of convenience grocery, other than that, almost all the spots now are full. And the collab space is getting very, very close, I just went through that again, they're, they're working on that, to bring in a bunch of smaller businesses. Inside of that collab space, so there's a lot happening on the inside and it's funny because I just had the conversation with, with the developer and I said, you know. You're doing so many great things on the inside, but people don't know it when they drive by, right? And so I'm like, you really need to start paying some attention to some of the outside stuff so people see some of the differences and everything, so. And then do you want to have M R B do their, uh, there, so?
Great, thank you guys. We know you have a packed agenda, so we won't take too much of your time, but we wanted to give you an update about where we're at. Uh, I'm Michael Indolo, I'm the Director of Economic Development for M R B Group, and my colleague.
Matt Horne. Good to see you all again.
We were asked to do an organizational assessment and a plan, uh, related to the organization, right? So just want to be clear, you know, you, there's a lot of different types of plans out there, there's this big think strategic plan, which is sort of outward facing into the world. What do we want to be and who do we want to attract and what's the marketing strategy and all that? That's not what this is, this is an organizational plan, right? Which means, how are you staffed, how should you be staffed, what's your budget look like? What should the activities of the organization be, right? The city, the E D C, and any of your partners in that space, right? So it's more about the mechanics of how things operate more than our strategy, right? So, uh, the kinds of things that we're doing right now is we're talking to your stakeholders, many of you around this table have been interviewed, many other ones. We have two days, Matt and I are sitting in different conference rooms, talking and talking and talking to people, trying to get a good feel for where. City council's at, where you're at as board, where your other stakeholders are at. Um, and I know in your packet is our scope of services, you can see in more detail if you, if you care to look a little further there. Um, we're obviously meeting with you now, but our main deliverable is this kind of memo, which outlines some recommendations. What we wanted to do tonight was just give you a very first quick look at what we're hearing from your stakeholders, right? Overall, just some very basic things, now, we also have a very small data report, I kind of. Don't want to give you the data report right now, just because it's, you have enough on your agenda, you can look through it at, at your own leisure, but if you're interested, I can talk about it. But I would like to just summarize some of the things we're hearing about, so that if you have some immediate feedback and say, hey, that's not the right direction or. We think something differently, let us know, okay? Um, one of the things that we found out from a lot of folks is that the city and the E D C own a fair amount of land. In the city. Which is a great asset, right now, it looks like there's not a very specific process for the city and the E D C. To divest of that land, right? What, what's the process by which you're gonna do that, how often are you gonna do that, what are the terms that you're gonna do that with, right? So that's one thing to think about, as kind of like an activity of the E D C. Number two, E D C, you have money and you have programs, and they're functioning as anticipated. Just one thing we did hear from stakeholders is, they're not, it's not necessarily very, very well-known in the community, there's some folks that. Basically, as an organization, we could do better at marketing the programs that we have, just to raise awareness around that. Number three, you need a strategy, right? We've, we've heard that from a lot of folks, um, fortunately, the city is doing a comprehensive plan, uh, just gonna start. Uh, updated their comprehensive plan shortly, but in addition to that, kind of what is that big think strategy, right? Who do you want to be, who do you want to go after, how are you gonna go after them, and how are you gonna deliver on that, right? Um, so that's definitely something we have, we think the com plan is gonna get you part of the way there, but one of the things that we want to. Uh, say from, just from, again, from what we're hearing is it'd be great if one or more members of this board. Participated in a formal way in the com plan to make sure that economic development is fully represented in that com plan process, right? So that's one thing that we're hearing from folks. And I don't, I don't mean to poke anybody in the eye, um, but you know, one of the things that we did hear is that. We have a bit of a reputational problem. In the development community as being not business friendly. And again, this is not to point fingers, we're just reporting what we hear. Some things that have come up is the fire marshal and, you know, delaying projects or getting in the middle of something where it's caused an issue, right? Code enforcement, you know, maybe not as business friendly as we want to be to the development community. And then occasionally hearing that the city council. Instead of being really proactive about saying what they want, that they'll wait for folks to come. And then sometimes the answer is, we don't want that, right? But the more effective strategy, if you want to bring dollars in your communities to say, hey, this is what we want, this is what we don't want, come to us if you have something in this column, right? So kind of understanding that. And then we, uh, we heard the, kind of the need for some short-term wins to help kind of turn that reputation issue around, right? Short-term win, one of the things is, hey, maybe one of these p- parcels of land that the city owns or the E D C owns. Maybe you could put that out and get a developer interested in it, right? Do a developer R F P, uh, and see if you can get, you know, t- tell them what, what the project is that you want, tell them the location, what they need to do. And select somebody and say, hey, we're, we're working with you, right, we're proactively going out there. Um, another one is, you know, you have different areas identified in the city as opportunity areas or redevelopment areas. Or whatever the name's gonna be in the new com plan, maybe pick one or two and focus attention on those two things. Just so we can get a couple of quick wins in succession, right, to kind of keep that momentum going. And then finally, you know, you know, uh, hopefully at this plan, we, we hope to deliver this plan in about thirty days. Deliver the mem- this sort of memo of recommendations at a joint meeting, we recommend continuing joint meetings with the city council. We've, we have heard, and this is not unusual, this is very typical, uh, that, that communication could always be improved between the two bodies, right? So that city council knows what you're doing and you know what city council's doing. Those are, are just initial feedback that we're reporting back to you. And certainly we'd invite your, you know, your comment or feedback on what we heard, if, if that's something that you resonate with or not.
Okay, members of the board, any initial thoughts or comments about? About the report in real time?
I, I know I gave you a lot here, so there's a lot to digest, you ha- you'll have it all in writing, you have plenty of time to contemplate, but just, you know.
So I'll, 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 I'll start. So do you find though any of this to be surprising in any way, given some of the structural organizational challenges with. F T Es in critical positions, I mean, you, you add that to some kind of the, the operational. Cause that's kind of what I hear initially, not necessarily that therefore disconnect with this board. But we know that this board exists under the umbrella of city operations and, and so, you know. You mentioned a few departments, whether it's planning and development, whether it's co-compliance, whether it's fire marshal inspection. They tend to be the front face of the public or the business community, whereas, you know, we're just here around a table making. Policy and funding decisions. But, you know, having worked with cities before, like, I don't find any of that to be surprising.
I think your point about headcount turnover is a good one, uh, what we, what we heard from. And I, and a lot of the folks that we spoke with are, are here tonight, what we heard from a, an overwhelming number of people is just. This idea of predictability in the development process, and what we tell communities a lot is, don't compromise your vision. Don't compromise your rules or there's no need to do favors or bend just to get a develop, those are actually the developers you don't want, the, the folks who are asking you to bend the rules. But you do need some predictability, and when you have the turnover you're talking about, that predictability goes away. Somebody today said systematize, right, I mean, that's one of the, one of the ideas that came out of this conversation, if it's a system. Then you pluck one person out or one person moves on to the, to their next, uh, job. And the next person steps in and inherits a system, um, so there is predictability and reliability, um, and that's just missing in, in this instance. And that, that will damage your reputation.
And, and recognize some of the things that we're hearing from stakeholders are in the domain really of the city, not necessarily of the E D C board.
That's right.
I, I know our comprehensive plan is, it's, you know, it's had some years behind it. But, but even considering, you know, with that being kind of a visioning document. Do, at least in your initial research, if you find that to be at least consistent with. The future land use map, you know, a lot of times, you know, we'll have, you know, parcels zoned for certain end use. And then that doesn't even match with what your visioning documents say. And then, again, the frustration then that's met when we're trying to attract investment, right? Jobs, assessed value, sales, et cetera. Any initial thoughts, uh, aside from the fact that it's an old document that needs to be updated? The thing that I'm always, always, you know, concerned about is a lot of the smaller suburban tier cities. We tend to try to do development the same way as some of our larger peers, like obviously Dallas. But even Arlington and Grand Prairie will have, you know, four times the population and square miles. I mean, you experienced with cities that are both kind of have, at the place where we're built out. I always think of Duncanville as more in a, in a redevelopment pattern as opposed to traditional economic greenfield development. But then you talk to the public, I mean, they still associate that with brand-new shiny buildings and, you know, your national tenants. Any initial thoughts on those things, I think that's then where both the challenge and opportunities is for this community.
Yep, well, well, I spent a lot of time, I was in this room doing most of my interviews today. I spent a lot of time looking at this map with people, right, and you can see, we, we are, and, and that's a common theme that came out. We, you know, we need to focus on redevelopment, there are a few spots where you can do some new builds, some interesting new buildings. Some of them are owned by the city or the E D C, which is great, right? But you're not gonna get, you know, you're not gonna get the two-hundred acre, you know, uh, logistics center or something like that, right? That's, that's not the area you're planning in. On the other hand, what I'm hearing from folks is those redevelopments can add significantly to your assessed value. Right, and therefore the tax yield, but you don't have to have the next big factory. If you take what you have and you increase the value of your existing assets, that's enough, right?
And with respect to the question about future land use map and the, and the relevancy of the, of the existing com plan. You know, I, we, I can't remember where we stole this quote from, but it's, we always say a plan is something from which to measure deviation, right? I mean, it's a plan, it's a forecast, it's something that we hope for, but what you want to be careful about in terms of confidence in the planning process and confidence in. The decision-making process, so if you think about your current land use as this line. And your future land use map says, we want to be over here, we want to make decisions that drive us toward this. And then city council gets a zoning request over here and says, yeah, yeah, that looks good. It happens, right, one, one or two times or over the course of a, it's been seven years since the com plan was, was last looked at. Over the course of seven years, maybe it happens, once a year is too much, but if, if it's recurring and if it's every time. And if it's every time for a certain group of developers or type of developers, then the confidence in the planning document gives away. And the, the, the folks who bought into it at the beginning kind of walk away from the process, so just being careful about that.
Yeah. I will say too that, from a com plan point of view, I think the biggest value that you guys can have is not that you're. Not updating your com plan and changing it as needed, but at least your decisions are consistent with it, right? Again, what Matt was talking about, that consistency, if I'm a developer and I want to come to Duncanville and invest money, I want to know. If, can I trust what's in the land use map, can I trust what's in the com plan? Or am I gonna hit city council and now I get a totally different answer, right? It is, i- I think it's very worthwhile that you're updating your com plan, I think that's great. I, you know, the ideal com plan document is a document, even though you're not necessarily the city council, that you're looking at it to. When you get requests for your economic development grant funds. Is this consistent with our community vision, right?
Well, will there be recommendation on how to align the departments?
Yeah, that, that would be a piece of this, that's our, our last deliverable is really, so, so what, right? So if we found out all this information, what do you do about it? And there'll be some, there'll be some recommendations in that, you're already taking some steps though, I'll, I'll acknowledge, I mean, one of the things that. We heard a lot of concern about and that we know to be concerning was the, the original organization where. You had a single director for planning and economic development. We recognize that there's a tendency as a department head to, uh, want to support your people when they make decisions. Well, there's a natural te- there's a natural tension or there should be a natural tension between economic development and code enforcement, right? Economic development is trying to push, should be trying to push the, the border and code enforcement's trying to hold the border, right? They're both right, they're both trying to do the right thing, um, and so, A, in that role as a director, you end up refereeing your own people. And it, it gets awkward, uh, and, and B, you spend a lot of time in planning and code enforcement, and that doesn't leave much time for economic development. So just that realignment alone is gonna open up a lot. So just that realignment alone is gonna open up a lot, uh, a lot of headway for you. Um, things like, and, um, the, the city manager reference at the beginning, involving you all, you, you referenced yourself as a policy board, and I love that, that, that's, that's your role. Involving you in the comprehensive plan, involving you in the selection of the, of the, of the, um, economic developer, those are critical uh, points that, uh, that now we don't even have to recommend, cause the city manager's two steps ahead of us. Um, but, uh, but we'll, but we will have some organizational, uh, recommendations that fall in line with that kind of stuff.
I'll, I'll just give one quick example, you know, there should never be an exam- there should never be a case where a fire marshal has to deal with a fire code problem after the project has commenced construction, right? All of those issues should be dealt with prior to the issuance of a permit, right? And, and there's different system going on right now, and it allows for these things, but you get really adverse impacts on the backend if you do it the way you're currently doing it, right? So we'll make some recommendations around that.
It's gonna be good.
Ultimately, it's the city council's gotta make that call, right? You can't make that call, but you can support it.
You'll also see, just a spoiler alert, I mean, you'll see some notes about prioritization, right? Doug, Doug and Michael and I come from a, a place where we don't have as many resources as you have here, but it's amazing how quickly those resources go, right? And, uh, if you, if, if the tendency is, let's, let's, you know, review things every month and, and ju- just kind of uh, assess what's in front of us, then very quickly those things can lose their impact. And so, we're gonna talk to you, or we're gonna make some recommendations about, about how you ensure that everything you're doing is in line with that strategy, is in line with that plan. And so that you have a fair reason to say, hey, thanks for the application, it's really well-written, but we really have to focus on these four key areas. Um, and, and people will understand, and even more, they'll read the key areas and know, this really doesn't align, this isn't the right spot for me. So you're not put in an uncomfortable position saying no. So anyway, spoiler alert, let's look for that.
Any additional thoughts or questions?
I was just gonna make a quick comment, Doug. One thing I'd like to see is, like, maybe our Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board and our TIF Board, some of our other boards come to this meeting maybe once a year or something, whatever's appropriate, and communicate what they're doing on those boards. So we have a better idea, so that when someone says that they want to do a project in the TIF zone, we'd understand what's going on in the TIF zone, what they're working on, to make sure that if we're promoting a project in that TIF zone, we're not counteracting what the TIF boards doing, cause I don't really know what they're doing. Maybe that's bad on me, and I should know, but I don't. But I, I think they'd be able to promote it, the Arts Board came here and they promoted some stuff that they want to do, and we, we got some exposure to them, which is new to us, so that was good.
I think one of the things I would suggest to you to keep in mind is, you guys also have a unique position where you may be another board, maybe, maybe you're not the city council, but you have so much financial resources available to you, that puts you in the driver's seat as a leading board, is what I would call you. And you guys can make some decisions, some policy on what the types of things that you want to do. And then those other boards like Keep Duncanville Beautiful, they can come to you whether or not that they're in alignment with that, right? And if not, then maybe they need to revisit that, or even go directly to council and ask for something different, right? So I wouldn't be hesitant about that kind of stuff, I mean, there's a lot of vacancies on some of the boards. Uh, Councilmember Gooden and I were just having that conversation right before, uh, this meeting, and, um, City Secretary's just confirmed for me, she's gonna do a briefing update for the next city council meeting, just FYI on that. But, um, you know, I, I certainly hear what you're saying, the council has been meeting, uh, with some of those committees and everything in a joint meeting, I know they want to meet jointly with you. But I also think that you have a unique role in this, where you guys as a board can really be a leader in what direction this goes, because of your financial resources and the other resources that are available to you.
Thanks, Doug. And I, I'm dealt to with Greg's saying, just, I filled a vacancy on the tactical finance board a couple months ago. And, uh, I can say that there is a disconnect, you know, in talking with the chair and just his ability or that board's ability to, to gain an audience with the staff. But I'm also used to TIF being a tool as part of that toolbox of economic development. So the fact that, you know, we've got a separate board, and then like Greg said, you know, this board isn't always aware of what little is going on with that board, because it's a very small, defined district. But I think there's just knowing what we all know about that tool, and some of the infrastructure and challenges that we could probably better leverage. I would like to see maybe that be included in the analysis, in terms of recommending the strategies of how we could better align and combine those two really powerful tools.
That's great. That's a good idea.
Yep. So, well, we continue our interviews tomorrow, we have a full day, both of us, uh, and we continue to gather that, that stakeholder input, and like we said, thirty days from now, we hope to have those recommendations for your review.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody who interviewed today, appreciate it.
Okay. Next item is for our public hearings. Item number seven, a public hearing on the following items. Item eight, item eight of the March twenty fourth, two thousand four DCEC agenda. They Drink Wine and Cocktail Lounge. B, item number nine, the agenda, the March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four DCEC agenda, the National Black Trans Advocacy Coalition. C, item number ten of the March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four DCEC agenda, Italy Family Pharmacy, Inc. Okay, I'll entertain motion to open the public hearing.
Go ahead, open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Comments, questions? All those in favor, say so by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion approved unanimously. Okay, for item number A, we have They Drink Wine. If there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor or opposition, first we ask that you state your name or business address for the record, and you're open at this time.
Hi, I'm Dawn McCallum, six ten Walnut Street, at theville. Um, I am a patron of They Drink, and, uh, many of my friends are. Uh, it, it's just, it's a wonderful classy place, it's elegant. You'd be surprised that you were in Duncanville, the, the first time I walked in, it's like, this is Duncanville? Uh, so to have another place where, uh, when people are visiting from out of town, they can come and just very easily take the shuttle over there and just meet some new friends, and everybody's very friendly there, very welcoming. Uh, I think it's a, a, a great image for, for Duncanville.
If you want my, did you say that? I'm sorry.
Oh, do you need me to repeat it?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone, anyone else for, for this agenda item?
I agree with her.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move for the second public hearing item, this is item nine, and it's for the National Black Trans Advocacy Coalition. Any of those wishing to speak in favor or in opposition, feel free to do so by stating your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Patrick Harvey. And I, uh, live at ten ten Huntington Drive, Huntington Park subdivision, Duncanville, Texas. And I've been doing so, or living in Duncanville since nineteen eighty-nine. I've been here a minute. And one of the things I've noticed along the way as I've been here a minute is I think it's important for cities to recognize, as well as individuals to recognize, who are you? What are you about? What are you representing? How do you want to be remembered? And so, this particular item, along with community vision spoken of by nice consultants, gives me reason to share with you my perspective in terms of this item on the agenda. I'm against it. I do not feel that my tax dollars should be used to support such an endeavor. Personally, I don't care what people do in their bedrooms. That is not a concern of mine, that is not my business. However, being a taxpayer and being a citizen, I do have the opportunity and will do so as I'm doing now, to express my concern about the manner in which my tax dollars are being used. Now, this organization, uh, and its members, I support whatever, whatever they feel like they need to do in order to achieve the goals that they want to attend to. But I would prefer that they do it without using my tax dollars. This is the only recourse I have to state my preference. The only other thing that I can do, I imagine, is not spend money in Duncanville and encourage people that I influence to do the same, but that's, that's onerous. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my perspectives on this issue, not personal, not personal at all. But it's philosophical. As a matter of fact, the lady with the day and drink, uh, I wish you well. In a previous life, I used to be on the council here, and I was a very vocal and strong advocate of barbecue and blues. But I had some of my, uh, compatriots, my peers, on the council fight me because they did not want to be seen as endorsing the evils of drink. I'm from New Orleans, and so it doesn't bother me. I've seen it, you know, and it's a choice. Uh, but, you know, some people didn't, didn't want it philosophically, didn't want to endorse that lifestyle. So I guess now the wheel has come full circle, and on this issue, I am a gainer. So again, thank you all for this opportunity and, uh, vote your conscience, thank you.
Thank you. We have any other comments for this particular item in favor or in opposition? Okay, we got one more public hearing agenda item, and it is item number ten, Italy Family Pharmacy. If you wish to speak in favor or in opposition, please do so by saying your name and address for the record.
My name is Roland Akko, I'm the owner of Italy Family Pharmacy, and I'm also the owner of the building. It's a new beautiful building that I brought to Duncanville. And I came here today to ask for help from this committee, so I can advertise the building. I'm asking for a sign grant, so I can have beautiful signs on the building, so community members can see what is there. It's a specialty pharmacy, we do retail, medical equipment, compounding, sterile and non-sterile, and we have a drive-through, so I'm in the community. So I'm asking this board to please approve the sign grant, so we can advertise the business to the community.
Doug, could you state the address of the, the pharmacy there?
One zero two East Daniel Dale Road, Duncanville, Texas. The pharmacy is, uh, suite one hundred. I also own the cleaning next door, suite one oh one.
Thank you, thank you for joining us this evening. Any other comments before we entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, just onto that one if I could, so that's item, that's, uh, your tab number ten. And I think maybe the, excuse me, the order got mixed up here a little bit, but, uh, anyway. Um, I think there's, there's an opportunity maybe for you to discuss that, I think the request for the signage is, is the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for the sign grant, is that correct? Nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars is the request, so. If I could also, because a question was asked for me earlier today, excuse me, I'm sorry. So under, under your public hearing here, seven A and seven B, um, because I believe that those would both be hot tax dollars. If you approve those this evening, those will not go to city council, but item C, like any other grant would.
Isn't it just, uh, is this a sponsorship?
Yeah, so that wouldn't go.
Consideration of the city manager's comments, any questions with respect to the application for the, uh, Italy Family Pharmacy? Doctor did mention that it's for a sign grant, but I wouldn't give the board an opportunity for any questions or comments with respect to that application.
I'm just assuming your preference is the last of you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
We're, here are no further comments, um, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I think that we close.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, do so by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, I think we're on unanimous. Motion carries. We're at item number eight. Discuss and consider possible action regarding sponsorship for They Drink Wine Cocktail Lounge located at two fifteen West Camp Wilson Road, street five, Duncanville, Texas, seven five, one one six.
I think that we table discussion for executive session.
Okay, this is properly moved and seconded, that we tabled item number nine for possible action to executive session. All those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed? Motion unanimously. Okay, item ten, I'm sorry. I meant to be nine, excuse me. Item number nine. Will discuss and consider possible action regarding sponsorship for National Black Trans Advocacy Coalition located at Post Office Box one one eight, two eight two, Carrollton, Texas, seven five, zero one one.
I think that we table the discussion for executive session.
Okay, being properly moved and seconded, to table item nine for executive session. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, this motion also carries unanimously. Item ten, discuss and consider possible action regarding application for incentive grant assistance by Italy Pharmacy Incorporated located at one zero two East Daniel Dale Road, suite one hundred, Duncanville, Texas, seven five, one seven.
I think that we table the discussion for executive session.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded to table item ten for executive session. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay, that motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item eleven, discuss and consider possible action regarding an extension for development agreement with Kazee Group LLC. They're located at one eleven West Daniel Dale Road, Duncanville, Texas. They're located at one eleven West Daniel Dale Road, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one three seven.
I move that we table the discussion to executive session.
Okay, item is been properly moved.
The owners, they are here to talk to us.
This is for.
Eleven and twelve both.
Okay, uh, it's been pointed out by staff that before we wrote on this motion for item eleven, that the owner, excuse me, uh, for Kazee Group LLC, which is item eleven, as well as the owner for item twelve are present. If any of the board had questions, regarding those requests for an extension to previously approved agreement.
I guess my question is, it's related to this letter. It's easier for you, it's the timeline of this there.
It seems like a lot of the timeline, this has to do with something that we were talking about earlier. And so, okay. Okay, well, we wanted to give, uh, either the owners, we'll start with, uh, Kazee Group, if you'd like to, uh, address the board, do so. I don't know that we have any questions at this point.
Yes, my name is Boyan. And I'm here for the Kazee thing.
Okay.
And as, uh, you can see from the timeline, majority of the problems was just getting started. Getting things, uh, pushed through. Working with the city staff. You know, uh, being told one thing, then told another thing, and then that person no longer here. Then here we gotta go out and get new surveys, plaids, and all this stuff. That was held up the project. So we finally got it approved back in October. And so, like I was saying, I pointed out the other things that we came across, weather permitting and so forth. And even with that, going ahead with the project starting in October. So that's about four and a half months. We're like eighty percent, uh, completed on the inside. And we're starting to work on the exterior. So our concern was, like I said, we're just looking for an extension to that grant, so we can complete the project.
Anyone else? Uh, I knew you told us your name. Can you give us your business address just for the record again?
One 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 West Daniel Dell.
One eleven West Daniel Dell.
The project address?
No.
Oh, my address, I'm sorry. One twenty-five West Wheeling Road.
Thank you. Okay, uh, so again, item eleven has been properly moved and seconded to table for executive session. Entertaining, uh, all those in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay, that motion approved unanimously. And item twelve, please discuss and consider possible actions regarding an extension for a development agreement with Delani Investments LLC. They're located at five eleven East Camp Wisdom Road, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six. Entertain a motion for possible action.
I move that we table item, uh, twelve, twelve seconds.
The person was here. Yeah, I'm here. Oh, okay, sorry. I'm sorry. I was like.
My name is Faison Delani. I'm with, uh, Delani Investments LLC. And, uh, we just need an extension. The, the timeline was just, uh, at a bad time. You know, it took, uh, it was a little bit of the city, it was a little bit of us. By the time we got everything, it was already, um, pretty much in December. And then we got to turn around to our attorney and then got the, uh, contractors involved. It was already mid-January. Um, and by then, trying to get the ball rolling, I was like, there's no way we're gonna complete it by, by the deadline of March. Um, so we're just asking for a three-month, possibly six-month extension to get the project done. And it's just, uh, it's paving, landscaping, and, um, exterior paint. So we've already spent a lot of money on the, on the renovations. So the exterior renovations, the new roof is done. We just have some painting still to do. We still have, um, always that, the asphalt history redone and, uh, landscaping. A lot of our contractors weren't able to, you know, they were backed up when we submitted everything, and they said it's gonna be, uh, you know, at least a month, month and a half turnaround time. And that's before getting any permits, and then we're gonna have to get the permit process, um, and get all the materials and everything, and there's just no way it would be done with it by, uh, March fifth, so asking for an extension.
I'd like to withdraw my motion, is that possible? And also, procedurally, can I go back and we, can we withdraw number eleven? Okay, I would. Do it side ten, side minutes.
As long as it's the second, it's the same.
Okay, all right. I move, I'll do it.
Do them individually.
Okay. I move that we withdraw, um, item eleven, my motion for item eleven. Uh, which was the table, that item after executive session.
Who was your second, correct? Do you agree with her? Go ahead and agree with that.
And then I move to withdraw my motion to, um, table item number twelve until after executive session.
All those in favor, or drawing the motions for item eleven, twelve? Do so by saying aye.
I assume you're gonna make a new motion.
Okay, I move that we grant an extension for six months for, uh, the Kazee Group located at one eleven West Daniel Dell Road, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one three seven.
Moved and seconded. Approval. Extension for development agreement with Kazee Group LLC, one eleven West Daniel Dell Road, Duncanville, seven five one three seven. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion approves unanimously.
And I move that we grant a six-month extension for the development agreement with Delani Investments LLC located at five eleven East Camp Wisdom Road, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six.
Properly moved and seconded to approve extension of the development agreement with Delani Investments LLC, five eleven East Camp Wisdom Road, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six. All those in favor, vote by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion approved unanimously.
So both extensions are approved.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask that for the proper discussion, that we include M R B and for the two hundred Hill Center Street, that we include Stan Smith when we get to those, for discussion in executive session. You can just do it all as part of the same. As long as the motion that was made includes that, it's open.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to, to go into executive session. We have a second.
Second.
Second, that we move to executive session. All those in favor? Thank you. So we're now in executive session. All right, I'm making a motion. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
I move that we exit executive session.
Second.
Okay, motion has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, I'll say aye. It is eight forty-two P M. Okay, so. Okay, we reconvene in the open session. Um, I entertain a motion, take any necessary or appropriate action as a result of closing executive session.
I move that we, um, direct staff to work on a draft regarding delegated authority for the city manager and/or his designate to approve any donation, contribution, and sponsorship request for less than or equal to three thousand dollars.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, I'll say aye. Me opposed, that motion carried unanimously.
I move that we, um, sponsor for They Drink and Wine Cocktail Lounge located at two fifteen West Camp Wisdom Road, suite five Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six, in the amount of twenty-eight hundred dollars. For, uh, transportation for Jazz Series, to be held on March twenty-ninth through April twenty-seventh.
Motion's made.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion has been properly moved and seconded. Any, any questions, any additional questions or comments on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Motion's approved.
I move that we table the application for sponsorship for the National Black Trans Advocacy Coalition located at P O box eleven eighty-two eighty-two Carrollton, Texas, seven five zero one one, due to an incomplete application.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Motion carries.
I move that we approve a grant application to the Hilton Properties located in Duncanville, Texas, up to ten thousand dollars reimbursable, not to exceed three events or calendar year twenty twenty-four. Subject to said application.
Question on that clarification, that would be under hotel motel hot tax funds?
Correct. So let me rephrase, a grant, um, under hotel occupancy tax, um, for Hilton Properties located in Duncanville, Texas, up to ten thousand dollars reimbursable, not to exceed three events or calendar year twenty twenty-four for transportation.
And I think you were authorized from the city manager to execute those, right?
Yes, with authorization for the city manager to pursue said grant applications.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is that it?
You're executive. Which part did you read off?
Oh, why am I down here? I'm sorry.
Efficient system. Make a motion for the applicant for the incentive grant assistance by Italy Family Pharmacy Incorporated located at one hundred two East Daniel Dell Road, suite one hundred, Duncanville, Texas, for a signed grant. At reimbursement at ninety-eight hundred dollars.
I'll second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, adjourn.
Aye.
Aye. All right, eight forty-seven.